Please, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Like to welcome everybody to the special meeting of Midland Council, sitting as the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation shareholder. Before I call the meeting to order, actually, I'd like to read the land acknowledgement, which is that the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people now known as Chipewa Tri Council comprised of Mosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the preconfederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams treaties of nineteen twenty three. The town of Midland recognizes that is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron Wendat, and the historic homelands of the Maiti, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. So I'll call this meeting to order and ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Seeing none. I'd ask for approval of the agenda, the agenda, and I have a motion moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Maine, that the contents of the special meeting of council, the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation shareholder. Close session agenda for July fourth twenty. Twenty-two be approved. Sorry, I need a motion to move into closed to do or not, and a clerk.
First, we do the approval of the agenda, and then we'll do a motion to move into closed. And I also, councillor McGinn is here.
She is here. I'm good.
Yep.
Welcome councillor. So. I need a show of hands, please, as to whether or not you approve the motion. All those in favor. Carrie, so we then move on to the part that I was a little confused about. We're going to go into closed. Moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by councillor Downer, that council move into closed session and further that this portion of the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to section three nine of the municipal act two thousand and one, as indicated subsection two I, a trade secret or scientific technical commercial financial or labor relations information, supplied incompetence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly, competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, persons rather, or organization specifically result to the Midland Bay Landing develop. Corporation development RFP submissions from three shortlisted developers. All those in favor, or sorry, comments or questions before I ask for councillor Maine?
I thank you. I know there's some concern from the public about going into closed and not, and although this is an incredibly appropriate reason to go into closed, could we get additional context? I know you just read the statement which lists the reasons under the municipal act why we should, but I, I think it would be very helpful for just a very short calls note summary from staff or clerk about why we go into closed and why that's an appropriate thing to do right now. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you want to tackle that?
Sure, your worship. We are going into closed for the reasons I set out in the municipal act, and it has to do with the fact that the information provided in the closed session could have significant impact on a group of persons, contractors who have obviously submitted an RFP. Therefore, we like to keep it enclosed. There will be a motion arising out of closed that will have a little bit more detail, but that's the reason that we have to go into closed.
Does that satisfy your query, councillor?
Yes, thank you. I think it was just additional context, and that the most important thing is the final decision will be made in open after discussion enclosed.
That's correct. Councillor Gordon.
Thanks. Just to expand on that, I too is a bit curious. This final decision that councillor Maine is referring to, is it accurate to say that we're going to be asked to select one of these three RFP submissions and bind the town today at the end of this meeting with some kind of next steps for Midland Bay Landing in relation to the RFPs? Is that the expected outcome of this meeting, or are we just receiving information?
Madam Clerk.
I believe the expectation is to receive the PowerPoint presentation on behalf of, I believe it's NBLC, and then in the closed session, council is going to have those discussions. So there isn't, you can't predict what's going to happen arising out of those discussions, but there will be a motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Will the motion be something to the effect of, you know, it's rather benign, that says that to, you know, staff are given a direction, you know, we're approving whatever staff direction is provided by council, or are we going to get into anything a little more verbose? Like, I'm just looking, what's the expect, expectation? Clearly, people know who are organizing this, what the ask is of us, and it's not, you know, how we get to the ask is the secret part. The fact that there is an ask and that we're expected to make a decision today shouldn't be secret. So I'm just trying to understand is, is that the end goal of this meeting is to select an award and RFP, or are we just getting information that's going to help us move this process along?
You will be asked to, you will be asked to, there will be a recommendation made, the opponent that will be recommended. You'll see the presentation as to what they're proposing as a consequence of the RFP. And then coming out of that, if it's the will of council, that there will be direction given through a motion, which will basically instruct staff to proceed with further next steps with Midland Bay Landing.
All right, good enough. We'll let her rep here. Just a lot of people are curious about, you know, what we're doing in camera. So I think this this dialogue up front may help appease some people or perhaps enrage others.
Thank you councillor. So any other comments with respect to moving into closed? Seeing none, I'll ask the question, all those in favor. Thank you, that carries. And with that, I will turn the meeting over, I believe, to Mr. Cunningham. Open. Thank you. So we're in open session now, having come out of the conversation about the bay landing and a discussion about a proposal put forward to the board and now put forward to the owners, which
Worship, Madam Clerk has a comment there.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to let you know, Mayor Strether, that there are a few people who have wanted the link to the open session. So our deputy clerk has sent the link, and we're just going to let these people in so that they would, they want to hear the conversation regarding the motion arising out of close. So if you could just give us maybe a couple of minutes.
Do that now, I'll give you five for those people who need a break and so on. So let's say we'll be back here at five. Five forty-five.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So welcome back to the meeting of special media council for Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation as a shareholder. Start proceedings. I have a motion moved by councillor Shevsky, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that council accept the presentation provided by NBLC and the verbal update from the Chair of Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute a letter of intent with the name developer for a one hundred and twenty day exclusivity period together with the Bay Landing Development Corporation and the council direct staff to make a public announcement of the successful developer, including their conceptual plans within twenty-four hours. So council, you've heard questions, comments or questions.
Thank you. I'd just like to, I know it's no shock to anybody, make a motion on the floor to defer this. And I'll be looking for a seconders so we can speak to this.
So it's technically, it's a motion to refer consideration. Secondary being a constant product. So I see councillor post the secondary clerk as a comment to make.
The motion to divert, defer is actually referred to as a motion to postpone. So if you're looking to defer the motion, councillor Gordon, it would be best if you would pick a date or a time of when you want to bring this back.
Okay, fair enough. So the date will be after the formation of a new council. So we'll say the first meeting in January. Whatever that magic date is, I don't have my calendar up in front of me, sir, but.
Yeah, we haven't set the, the schedule yet because we don't have a new council, so it's a little bit. So to the, I could put that council deferred the decision to select a developer for the Midland Bay Landing property to the first regular regular meeting of council in January of twenty twenty-three.
Perfect.
And the secondary, I believe, is councillor post.
Councillor Post, okay.
So the motion defer is on the floor. Councillor Gordon, you're making the motion. You have five minutes to speak to it.
Thank you. So this council has received over fifty emails urging us, each of us, to support the, this deferral that's on the floor right now, and any further action plan on Midland Bay Landing to the next council, which is only a few short months away. October twenty-second. Previously to this term, or previously in this term, I'm sorry, we were presented with a petition signed by thousands of local residents and hundreds of equally concerned residents of neighboring municipalities, asking us to defer this plan, put it to a referendum of some kind, and perhaps even rethink it entirely. This entire project has all been about phases, some with success and some with failure, and it dates back, you know, for about a decade now. And our fee process was authorized by this council and Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation formed, and they moved swiftly along the busy work of getting things done, pre-selecting qualified development proposals for the existing master plan that's in place, which I will add was done, you know, about ten years ago with a lot of public consultation. It's now pretty dated. Each step of the way, though, has been a milestone that each previous council, including this one, has participated in, moving slowly and cautiously along all the while with, you know, some growing opposition from residents, both past and current. The common denominator is the wish to expand the public space, preserve parkland and waterfront access for this generation and future generations. Arguably, some of that is in the current plan, and it is actually pretty exciting what we were shown tonight. But it is not enough for many, and perhaps maybe not enough for most of our residents. COVID has really changed people's perspectives on parkland and outdoor recreational spaces. So now that we're at the end of this RFP process and being asked to enter into this letter of intention with a developer, with a natural expectation that it evolve into a purchase agreement, a new council will be elected this October that sees much change around our table. You know, clearly, one of the three incumbent candidates for mayor, only one of us are going to be sent back next term, perhaps none if Ms. Schmidt Jones is elected mayor. A new, you know, we have a deputy mayor who's declared that he won't seek reelection, and it's unknown about who else around the table. Is it going to be in the race incumbent or otherwise? So campaigning begins at the end of August, a month away, and each candidate, including some of us today, will be given a chance to earn a clear mandate, a crystal clear mandate about the future of Midland Bay Landing, the plan that people will see, and input on the plan that has yet to be revealed to the public among other issues. So my ask today of you is simply that we accept our role, the role that we've played all along, and the previous councils have played in Midland Bay Landing thus far, and pass the next phase, which is the awarding of the purchase agreement to the next team Midland in a few short months, as they'll be given a clear mandate, one way or the other, on next steps by the good citizens of Midland. I will be asking for a recorded vote on this deferral and any other subsequent motions on the floor this evening. Subsequent, any input or questions? That's my submission. Thank you.
You button, right, but council chef's game.
Then Ross. Thank you. I have two questions about the deferral. The first question would be if today was the first day of council, councillor Gordon, would you, would you approve this plan as you've seen? And secondly, of the fifty-nine emails we did get from residents, none of them understand the negative consequences that could potentially happen by deferring this. So while you're proposing the deferral for these residents, can you please inform them of the potential negative effects that that may come from a deferral? Worship, should I answer? I'm happy to.
I'll meet.
Okay, so if this was early in our mandate, or perhaps even with a year left, I wouldn't be suggesting a deferral to a new council. That's very clear. We're like in the twilight hours of this term. That's the only, that's the reason why I'm passing this off, not because I'm afraid or cowardly or don't want to commit or make a decision. This is just being responsive and responsible in my mind. Now, as for the negative parts of this, I, this is where I don't know if we should get somebody else to talk about it because I don't want to accidentally put my foot in the mouth and say something from our in-camera meeting. But my, I'll give a high level summary in that my expectation is that, and I believe a developer's expectation is that if we enter into this letter of intent, there is a period of exclusivity, and the natural progression is that an agreement of purchase follows that. And while nothing I saw tonight that has yet to be revealed to the public gives me any inclination that this developer is, you know, like the last one, or that the plan is not going to evolve into something really amazing for this piece of property. The key is that there's a lot of people in this community, more than the fifty or so that have emailed us, you know, because a lot of people signed that previous petition, and you're as connected online as I am. There's a lot of people that want some input on this. So they can't get a referendum. I was one month too late to have this put on the ballot. Unfortunately, by the time I looked into referendum, so the best referendum there ever was is election day. And what I'm suggesting is that each of us, when we're banging on doors, for those of us who are trying to get back here again, make this a really big and important question when we're talking to residents, and get that clear mandate to carry on with the plan and to award that agreement of purchase and build this through. Then we're not just guessing that we have the mandate, because technically we do, we have the power and authority to do it right now. But we'll have a crystal clear mandate from the electorate, and that's, that's what I'm suggesting the delay is. Unfortunately, my questions earlier, which I can't get into weeds detail about without disclosing confidential information, didn't provide me any assurances that this agreement of purchase would be you know, available to the, or given to the new council. It could actually potentially come back to this council, and that is something that our residents are asking us to defer. Thank you for the question.
Councillor Post.
Thank you. I do support this postponement. The emails, the phone calls, the text messages, I can't ignore what our residents are asking. And that's not to say that I don't appreciate, and I'm not interested in what we've seen, and development is going to happen. It's just how and when. And I really truly believe we have the power to make things happen, and if a postponement is good for the residents, and to make everything better, I think that's what we need to do. I think the risk is worth it. I don't know what else to say. I just really want to say that I do support what our residents are asking. Like the phone has been ringing off the hook. My emails is as big as yours. And I'm here to listen to them, speak for them, and that's it. I'm going to do what they're asking.
Thank you councillor. Deputy Mayor Ross, I have councillor Cunningham, anybody else wish to speak?
Thank you very much, your worship. I'm a little confused on the emails. Any email I received came from the website of the councillor Bill Gordon for mayor. I'm not sure what other emails I got, but I don't know why we're, we're receiving emails from someone running for mayor beyond me, but I did reply back to most of them, and I was surprised that about thirty percent of them, the emails weren't even active. When the bounce backs saying they weren't even any good, so it is what it is, but I'm surprised. One of the things I always refer back to is the thirteen ways to kill a people. And the number one way that this gentleman, Mr. Doug Griffith MBA, talks about is don't take responsibility, defer. I will not be supporting. I take being on council and being elected very, very, very seriously, and I am going to work very last day that I am on this council and make the decision for the people of Midland. The people have voted me in to make them. So to defer is a, to me, is someone afraid of making the decision, and I want to make sure that the people out there are listening that when they go to choose a leader, they choose the ones that aren't afraid of making the decision. And they, and they're not afraid. They're going to defer and push it back for somebody else to decide. That's not me. You will not get that from Mike Ross. I'm going to make the decision. I think this is a fantastic deal for residents and the people of Midland. It is our future that we're talking about. I've been on council for twelve years. We've been trying to get this going. I, I was against buying the piece of land. I've come around. I think this is great. Our future all hinges on how this is done. So yes, go ahead and defer it and push it off for somebody else, but I will not be one of them deferring it. I'm not afraid to make decisions, and I will proudly vote yes in favor of this. I think this is greatest thing to ever happen to our town, and I'm going to be proud to have my name associated with it.
Here, here.
Councillor Cunningham, thank you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. This is one of the key reasons that an arms-length board is needed to shepherd this process through multiple councils. This is not something that was contemplated as being within the expertise of council, nor our decisions about which developer we interviewed that we personally like best, that we think should be doing this. There's some misconstruing and misinformation certainly out there that these fifty or so people have seen and responded to. It is not based on relevance. I think what you're seeing is something that is made extremely salient, that is not in the least relevant. That the public input at this phase of the choosing of a developer isn't happening is totally appropriate and municipally, municipally apt. There will be more public input. And in fact, the time for responding to a pre-election request for postponing was several years ago. There was ample time in the last few years to do so before the RFP went out. It is an incredibly inappropriate use of the time and efforts of our staff, our business community, our board, the development community that has engaged in good faith to even propose such a motion this evening. Interestingly, and worth communication once again, this council is in a continuing process that was initiated even before the previous council, which will not come to fruition for this council or likely the next council. This, the previous councils did a huge amount of public input and will, well, we won't be, we won't get a chance to do, be part of the other public input that the next council will indeed be doing with the developer that builds on this beautiful gem of our waterfront, making it possible to finance the beauty and accessibility that this council, this town, our budget cannot afford. Further public input and oversight will be happening with the next council, with staff, with the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation. It certainly seems, from what I'm seeing, that the vocal opponents in the public don't understand any of those aspects that this council did not put forward a deferral three years ago, four years ago. Four years ago, you know what I mean, three and a half years ago. It's a little late. It's inappropriate. It's questionable. Why we would do so? Why would we, why would we jeopardize our reputation in the business and development community? Why would we jeopardize the sustainability of our town and our ability to enjoy our waterfront in a way that the public has decided in the existing master plan and will have input on in the future master plan to make sure that this goes forward in a professional fashion? I true, truly, totally appreciated the professional ethical, high integrity way this has been being handled with a Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, especially in the last year, as they got these plans underway, which we signed off on, approved of, and pushed the go button on. That was the time, should anyone have wanted to push stop, to have had that happen. And I do want to say, while I can, thank you so much to the board for really excellent shepherding of this process that you have joined on to.
Thank you councillor. And the comments from council. Okay, I'd just like to say that like echo what councillor Cunningham said, that the fifty-five emails coming from a form page from councillor Gordon's website, read them all. What I would have to say is somewhat akin to this, this thousands of people who signed a survey, most of them originated, at least a third, if not more, originated out of country, and it just goes down from there. And some of the people who actually responded in the affirmative to the change.org petition. When asked, have you read the, have you read the master plan? Answered, no. They really didn't know what was going on, and when presented with the copy of the master plan, gone through it, because it was exactly what we were looking for. I think the same thing applies here when you're talking about people who go through a website and get a particular slant on what's going on, not having the full set of facts before them, as councillor Gordon has, and as councillor Post has. Don't seem to recognize that, that we are kind of at the moment bound to a particular process that, that as councillor Cunningham pointed out, could have at any point along the way, for example, last December said, oh, no, we don't want to do that, and convinced the council at the time not to participate. So I'll just leave it at that, and I'm going to call the question. Councillor Gordon has asked for a recorded vote, so let's get out with a recorded vote. Councillor Gordon, one last point.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up because it's came up twice now. So just so you know, on my website, I have a form that when people fill out whatever it is they want to talk about and press the button, it emails every councillor independently. On the bottom of that, it stamps the origination or, you know, website, which I won't, I won't even say the name because it's shameless self-promotion right now. But it, it stamps that at the bottom. So, you know, if Deputy Mayor Ross, because I've now heard it several times, including this in the complaint to the integrity commissioner, that he's shocked and doesn't understand how this works. It's just how the form works on the website when you submit it. So these are real people that are taking the time based on whatever facts or non-facts they have interpreted to send us communication. They could easily paste our email addresses in on their outlook and do it. So that's how that works. And Mike, if you're interested, I can give you an offline little tutorial on how it, how it works so you can see for yourself. So you see there's nothing untoward. And then just lastly, I'll, I'll remind everybody that I originally intended to do this motion back in April. And that was subsequently stopped because of an integrity commissioner complaint launched by our CEO that I've since been absolutely unequivocally cleared on any wrongdoing. And I had to publish that myself because the town didn't bother. So I was trying to do this earlier, but I was shut down through this fear tactic about this blackout period that turned out to be completely unfounded. So we could have had this conversation ages ago. So that's why, just so we're clear on, it should have been done earlier.
You know, getting into a point of warrior process here if we're not careful. So I, I see councillor Cunningham's hand up. I'm not going to acknowledge it. I'm going to call the question so we can get past this and get on to the actual business of the evening. So recorded vote, madam clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor Strether. Members of council, you've heard the motion. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Councillor Gordon?
Yes.
Councillor Cunningham?
No.
Councillor Post? Deputy Mayor Ross?
No.
Councillor Maine?
I know.
Councillor Downer?
No.
Councillor Oshewski?
No.
Councillor McGinn?
No.
And Mayor Strether?
No.
The motion is defeated seven to two.
Thank you, madam clerk. We now revert back to the main motion. Do, do folks want that read again, or can we just move? Councillor Maine.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't responding to your question of, you want the motion read again. Can I make some points and comments, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The reason why I didn't vote for the deferral was we're about to enter into a letter of intent, and the intent is that you move towards a purchase agreement. And basically, we found our fiance. We're entering into an engagement period. We haven't signed the deal. We haven't gotten married yet. But that's probably the best analogy or metaphor that I can come up with on what process that we have at hand. I did also want to make a comment about why I support this iteration, what the designs, what we've seen, and the current master plan. I think there is a myth that the current plan is dated. I think that if you went through that same exercise today, you come up with the same results, and which is, we need housing desperately. We need to address the financial health of our community. We do also want to ensure one hundred percent access to the waterfront and public ownership of the waterfront, which is a key principle in this. We also want to have great parks and public realm. And the other big concern is that it is an industrial brownfield site. And I know there's a lot of discussion about the all-park option, and I love that idea too, as an urban, you know, romantic, urban utopianist. I, I just love that idea. I think a lot of people who we were talking to in the last week or so, they love that idea, and a lot of people have bought into this idea. Wouldn't it be amazing if it was a big forty-acre park? Brownfield of the site really restricts that, and so the draft record of site condition goes to show that it is a brownfield, and there are contaminants that we should be concerned with. Contaminants that can harm human health, like arsenic. There are inorganic and organic solvents. Tricorallethylene is a famous pollutant that pollutes wells in our community. The Sundowner Well is contaminated with tricorallethylene. Robert Street West, Antenna Tanking, is contaminated with tricorallethylene. So the remediation of the site is the redevelopment of the site. And so the all-park option is not a realistic option. And so the all park option is not a realistic option financially and sustainably environmentally. So I just wanted to make that point very clear. And I think that's a really important message that the town communicates to the community is that the brownfield radiation restricts the ability to develop it the way that some people are envisioning. And I love that idea too. I love that concept. But realistically, what we have and what we're agreeing to addresses the needs and concerns of the community in terms of housing, economic well-being. And again, public realm and parks and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make those comments because I think that's really important for the community to understand the additional context around the site. And that it isn't a clean slate and we can't literally do anything that we want to. We do have to kind of find the right balance of public realm, public ownership and private sector development. And so going forward, I think that this is a really important next step, the letter of intent. It, it, we found a partner that we've had some third party people review this financially, their capabilities, their track record. And so hopefully we're going to continue on this path and we're not binding anything at this moment. But we are moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to make those comments to provide some additional context for the community and reasons why I'd be supporting this at this time. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, custom main. Deputy Mayor Ross, I think I saw your hand.
Excuse me. Thank you, worship. I just wanted to thank the board of the Midland Bay Atlantic Committee for bringing this forward. As I know, it's been a lot of hard work and your hard work has finally paid off. I can't help but sit here and think of a former deputy mayor, Stephen Cramp, who we've had many a conversation over the time when we were about to purchase this land and his was, he had a vision of having this wonderful public space with residential and commercial and, you know, a place that we could develop, be something proud of at our waterfront. And it looks like we're, you know, making the next step forward to that. So I can't help but think of him and and as we, not a surprise, I was against purchasing this land. I didn't at the time, twelve years ago. But my time, you know, my mind has changed and I never thought we could envision something going this grand in the town of Midland and it really is an exciting time. So I really want to thank the board for all the hard work I had. I sit on that board. I don't know enough about these types of things. I had, I was a little hesitant, I must say, to put my faith into you, but I did. And I can't believe the outcome. So quite emotional and it, it really is amazing. I'm so excited for the future of Midland. I know Midland, people are very tough with change and we're all afraid of it, but I, I really believe that this is the best. Our kids are going to be so proud of it and our grandkids. This is going to be a legacy that we're going to have and and just to cement Midland as, in my eyes, the greatest place in the world. I'll, I'll always love this town and I hope that you know, we can able to move this forward. So once again, I really want to thank the board for all the hard work. We couldn't have done it without you guys. So thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor, Counselor Gordon, I see your hands up.
Thank you. So assuming, you know, that the LOI is going to be a go in a couple of minutes. I think once the, because there's going to be a media release that's going to share some of the neat stuff we saw earlier in camera very shortly with the community and that'll give folks a chance to see, you know, realizing it's not a site plan. But it's a conceptual drawing of what could be done by this developer and, you know, presumably if they draw stuff like that, they could actually build it. So that is, there's going to be a lot of time between today's meeting and, you know, the next phase in this, which is the purchase agreement. And I will be looking for continued input as I'm sure all of my peers will be from you about what you see in this and the potential and if it's changed your opinion at all. That I know there's going to be some, some concerns when you look at some of the amazingness that's phase two, which is many years away, but you know, that it could effectively just kill our downtown core. And it's also that it could be just be a concrete jungle on the waterfront. So, but I want you to look at these things with open. Try and have an open mind about it. And I remain committed to try and deferring a purchase agreement then, which is the next step in this until the new council. I'm just telling everyone right now. But for what it's worth, I would like to have a recorded vote on this next stage. And I do appreciate my counselors, fellow counselors' passionate opinions about not only my motions, but the conversations and where we're going with this. Just to summarize the plan that I see, it doesn't suck. I think it is actually incredible. It has elements in it that I think would be good for the community. And there's obviously a lot of steps between now and a site plan and real, really getting to flesh out what, what it could be and how it's going to be approached in phases. So we'll let that process play out. Clearly, I'm still in favor of moving this to the new council or just, I can see them. They're right there, you know? It's forming almost in front of us. But if that's not the will of my peers, then so be it. I, I continue to advocate for the folks that put me here. So thank you and I look forward to the recorded vote in a few minutes' time.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? So I don't see any. I'd just like to say that what I saw this evening was a financial very financially sound plan, rewarding plan for the community, which will stand us in very good stead. Public realm remains in public ownership and shrines the public access to the water across the entire waterfront. Something people were very passionate about in the original and continue to be very passionate, original plan and very, continue to be very passionate about. The people who are going to, who will be engaged in this one twenty, hundred twenty day engagement period are very passionate about public engagement and will continue that process with the public, with council and with the board. People have suggested that this is being rushed. In fact, this has been going on, as like Deputy Mayor said, for eleven years. It's likely to go on for multiple councils beyond this one and the next one. It's probably so that people don't, so the people understand it's probably a fifteen to twenty year build out. It's that extensive proposition. And I think it's something that in the future, people will be very, very proud of. The renderings, even though they're conceptual, stunning and very much engages the public and the residents of Midland. It's cognizant, the developers are cognizant of its potential impact of commercial development on the downtown. And I'm working very closely, very diligently to ensure that the development is engaged in with the downtown and very much connected to the downtown. So I will support this. Thank you. So again, I'll ask, is there any other comments before custom main?
Uh, thank you, worship. It's just a quick comment. The one public member who was very passionate had rendered some really amazing designs of, of how the space could be more inclusive for indigenous people, M A T people. And I think that that principle should carry forward to the, the public realm elements. And I think that that conversation is going to continue. And when we move towards some of the urban design exercises and engagement, that's why it would be great to hear more from the community about how we can celebrate our indigenous people, how can celebrate our M A T heritage and the treaty people, the Chippewa Tri-Council Nation and the Huron-Wendat people and incorporate some of those great ideas that people have for the site, albeit not the naturalization that people would like to see due to the bioremediation restrictions. But there's so many great opportunities for public realm, for public art to be inclusive and to be a great public realm and public space. So I just wanted to comment on that because there was comment that the bioremediation of the site, just by having the trees grow, is addressing the brownfield and it doesn't quite. And so that's why the proposed remediation strategy of capping and venting is trying to prevent us from disturbing the site and churning up all of the very various amounts of toxic chemicals, which I think is a really big part of the conversation is the brownfield piece of it. But I just think that that's additional context that the community needs to know because there's some people that are going to be very disappointed that it's not the all park option. And I really want to acknowledge that. But we're here trying to come up with a realistic and sustainable vision that addresses all the needs of the community. And I think that's, we've landed on that today. So thank you for the additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And I would agree that there's a lot of space for consultation with the person nation and the T, M A T folks about how we might even engage conversation around the nexus of three cultures within the town of Midland. I think it's contemplated within the GeoPark program as well, which has indicated an interest in being a part of the, the development. So, I'm sorry, C O, Dino, last comment to you and anyone who called a question.
Thank you, your worship. And regardless of how, how councilable, I did want to take the opportunity to thank certainly the staff that were involved in bringing this information forward and obviously the board. Along with, you know, the consultants that they employed, our, our responsibility, both as a board and staff, is to bring you professional information and advice. And certainly as long as I've been here at the town of Midland, this project has been constant, a constant focus of this team. And I'm really appreciative of, of the board members, including Angela Grani, who was the secretary. So thank you very much for, for allowing this information to come forward. I know there was a tremendous amount of work being done. And in particular, I do want to, to single out Chair Kernahan. I think his tireless effort on the board is certainly appreciated by all the people who work with him. And, and I wanted to acknowledge everything he's done. So with much appreciation for Chair Kernahan. I know he is very passionate about the community and, and that was certainly evident throughout the two years I've, I've been able to work with him.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. So council, you've heard, Mr. Kernahan, yes. Okay, so you may want to, you want to make a comment or, you know, all right. So council, there's a request for a recorded vote. Madam Clerk, if you would, so do so, please.
Thank you, Mayor Strethern. Members of council, you've heard the motion. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor?
Counselor McGinn?
Yes.
Counselor Post?
No.
Counselor Maine?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Oshewski?
Yes.
And Mayor Strethern?
Yes.
The motion is carried seven to nine.
Seven to two.
Or seven to two, sorry. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I thought maybe it was the new math. So with that, the motion carries. I now have a motion moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Gordon. Bylaw, Counselor Gordon, are you willing to move this, which is a bylaw, to enact the proceedings?
Yeah, probably for optics would be best if I didn't. Okay. It's just procedural, but yeah, if you could pass it off to someone else, that'd be great.
Okay, Counsel Oshewski.
Love to.
So then moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Oshewski, that bylaw twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings, the special meeting of council, Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation. Closed session held July fourth, twenty twenty-two, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. And finally, council, I have moved by Counselor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor McGinn that the special meeting of council, Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, closed session adjourned at six twenty-two P M. All those in favor? Thank you, counselor. And a special thank you to the board and to staff who got us to this point. Very much appreciated. It certainly could never have happened without the executive group. And I thank Mr. McIntyre, Chair Kernahan and Mr. Barber in particular, but also Mr. Douglas, the team of ASIO, who provided a very extensive knowledge base to a problem which has brought me into a rather special place in its development history. Thanks to you all. Have a great